That they buy as opposed to or nine bags of garbage as opposed to only being allowed to fill the one bin that the city would provide.
Correct.
So it ends up that they can put more garbage out.
Correct.
And would fit in one of the city's bins.
Much more, yes.
And they would have and they would have to purchase all of and they have that's that's where the inequity lies.
The black container holds about four bags of those like a white kitchen bag of trash. That's about what you just put in there. You can put about four of those in one.
I have to get a we'll have to get a ruling on pizza boxes because I heard there were no.
Oh gosh, you put all those in?
Sometimes there are, sometimes there aren't.
Okay, so I never throw them in.
Well, then, you know, then it won't be enough room in the other.
Because how many pizza boxes you got?
Well, well, for example, that one was picked up once every other week. It could be four or five.
Are you willing to give up some of yours? Trash cans.
I don't have any. I have one. I have the blue and the red.
Okay.
The blue one is picked up once every two months.
That's recycling. That's recycling. Eight seven.
I'm going to call the meeting, the regular council meeting for the City of Ashdabula. Today is Monday, June 3rd, 2024. If you would at this time, please stand for the prayer and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today. And your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Bell, will you call attendance in our air-conditioned building?
Ms. Holman?
Present.
Mrs. Mills?
Here.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mr. Guerrero?
Here.
Mr. Simeone?
Here.
Mr. Roskovic?
Here.
Mr. Timonier?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Augustine?
Yeah.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Ms. Mrs. De Giacomo from tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Holman and a second by Ms. Foglio. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will excuse Mrs. De Giacomo by a six to zero vote. At this time, we will have a mo- we entertain a motion to convene an executive session at the conclusion of our regular meeting for the purposes of employment of personnel and contract negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mr. Guerrero. Will you call the roll?
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
We will convene that executive session after we conclude our business this evening. We will reconvene our council meeting, but we will conduct no business and vote on no items at that time. Ms. Bell, may we have minutes, please?
May 20th, 2024, regular council meeting was called to order at 7 o'clock PM by Council President Roskovic. Ward War Count Ward One Counselor Kim Foglio offered the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Present, Mr. Roskovic, Mr. Simeone, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Guerrero, Mrs. Mills, Ms. Holman, Mrs. Giacomo. Officers present were City Manager Timonier, City Solicitor Cecilia Cooper, Finance Director Marie Ivaros Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bell.
May I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Ms. Holman. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the entire minutes by a six to zero vote. Thank you. We will go on with our city council and our committee reports. Are there any motions from city council or any city council committees? I don't believe so. So we will go on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several ordinances to ask for tonight. First, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Association of Public Treasurers and Sedgwick for Workers' Compensation Group Rating Program for a 12-month period to commence January 1st, 2025.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with the Seabrook Township Board of Trustees, mailing address on Center Road in Ashdabula for the purpose of cooperative paving of Woodman Avenue from West 47th Street to State Route 20 and Broadway Street.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Holman moves, Mr. Simeone seconds. Any discussion? I I know the residents on Woodman Avenue are going to be happy about that. Road's been needing some attention for quite a while, so. And that's good. We're working with Seabrook to do that. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to make application with the State of Ohio Department of Development for an allocation grant program to be used in conjunction with the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund for the purpose of improvements in administrative costs for the West Avenue sidewalks for a total amount of $196,000, of which $150,000 will come from the allocation grant and $46,000 will come from the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. This funding will be paid in and expensed from Fund 290.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Foglio moves, Ms. Holman seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance for the purpose of making Holbert Avenue between West 6th Street and West 8th Street one-way from West 6th to West 8th. This change will allow for the creation of parking spaces along the west side of Holbert Avenue for the Riverbend Hotel.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
I will second. Ms. Foglio moves, Mr. Roskovic seconds. Any discussion? The property on between West 6th and West 8th is owned by the river. That that's going to be down the road someday, a parking lot.
Well, it'll be hopefully sooner than later, so we're we're hoping that this is only temporary because they will obviously need that that parking area. So there is parking behind the hotel. They've also leased some space within Goodwill's property on their parking lot. And then with these additions, we can get them open. And if you go down there between West 6th and West 8th, the property that you mentioned, there is equipment on there that they've been starting to move dirt and get it prepared. But unfortunately, it won't be done before the July opening. So we're we're hoping to help them out here with some parking spaces in the meantime.
And I think that parking lot would be big enough that it other more than the hotel patrons will be allowed to use it, I imagine. No, you think it's going to be?
No, this will be exclusive for the hotel. They'll own it and maintain it, so, yes.
All right. It'd be nice to have extra because we, you know, we need parking down there.
We're we're actually, this was a really good idea, making this one way. So we're trying to see if there's other roads within that district that we might be able to do this on.
Yeah, because parking down there on the weekends or on in and giving up.
Something challenging, yes. It's a good good problem to have.
Yeah. And as Mr. Simeone and I were discussing, and I think we mentioned it before, we're going to have to do something with Hallibur Hill.
On the west, on the
East side.
East side, yes. If it wasn't for one house.
We would have vacated it, yes.
Did I hear somebody down there? I'm sorry.
Do they have valet parking?
I believe they're trying to negotiate a with with a company that provides that. I don't know if it would be every day, though.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Molded Fiberglass here in Ashdabula for the purpose of granting a sewer credit in the amount not to exceed $87,285.14 for a settlement of sewer deduction.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Foglio moves, Ms. Mills. Did I hear you second? I did, okay. Thank you. Mrs. Mills seconds. Any discussion?
Mr. President, just for context for the for the council meeting, as I stated in pre-council, Molded Fiberglass had installed a what's called a deduct meter. So these meters go in before equipment that either evaporates water or it's used within their processes or it's just water that never hits the sewers. They had been reporting reads to our wastewater treatment plant for use in our yearly reports to the EPA, but they were not reporting those reads to our sewer billing department, which was the disconnection there. And this meter had been in for several years. We negotiated back for three-year credit. They're not getting a check from us for that amount, but there are two accounts that we will be distributing that settlement amount on. So as soon as they run out of that credit, they'll be paying again. But they have several sewer accounts. We've identified two of them where these deduct meters are part of their facility that we're going to put the credit on. And I think those are listed in the agreement.
All right. Any other, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with National Pump and Process of Aurora, Ohio for the purpose of providing a new pump and various components for the Bridge Street and Morton Drive Pump Station in the amount not to exceed $13,250. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund 504.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Foglio, Mrs. Foglio moves, Mr. Simeone seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Cisco Imaging here in Ashdabula for the purpose of providing exterior signage for city halls, city council chambers, and the Health Department in the amount not to exceed $23,375.40. Funding for this expense will be taken from the Permanent Improvement Fund 412.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guerrero. Any discussion?
Mr. Manager, I can't, did we say when this is going to be done?
Once we get this signed, we'll start having our, what they call like a pre-construction meeting with them and then we'll we'll get all that information then.
Is everything also getting painted the same color? I can't remember.
We got a quote to paint this building. I've kind of held off until we got these prices back and get the parking lot done. But we did get a quote to paint this building to match that building. It wasn't bad, but we haven't decided to pull the trigger yet.
Counselor Mills, do you mean the signage or the actual buildings?
The the signage, but I kept thinking we were we were painting the building, so I didn't know.
The parts where the signs would go on this building, I don't think would be affected by the paint.
Okay.
So the brick, the reddish brick that's on this building, we want to match that building. And then the trim would be painted brown on this building.
Would we do the Health Department too?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
And is there a reason why it won't be consistent amongst all three buildings?
The Health Department building has its own look. Plus, with the way the roof is, I'm not going to redo the roof to match the coloring and it just doesn't make sense.
But the signage will all be similar.
No, actually, the Health Department, as part of their accreditation and branding, has their own logos and signage.
Because of their consistency with other health facilities across the state?
It's somewhat that. If you if you look at health departments across Ohio, they all have kind of the same public health logo. And then it's just a matter of saying which municipality they're with or which which political subdivision they're with below it.
So will there be anything that's consistent between the paintings of the colors or the painting of the signage for all three buildings?
I mean, just that the colors will be blacks and whites and yeah, that's that's about it. Again, it's not signage, it's lettering for the most part on these two buildings, except for the signs that are on the poles.
Mr. President, we just want everyone to know that the sign on the Key Bank Building is not recommended to move down here because it's 15 years old. So it's not like we can't, yeah, we can't move that sign here and use it.
The digital sign, yes. The digital sign that's on the side of the building. We contacted the manufacturer of that and because most of it is obsolete and there's not any updates to it or the software, they didn't recommend the expense of moving it versus, of course, buying a new sign, yeah.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Jefferson Health Plan for the purpose of providing employee group health, dental, and vision insurance for city employees for a period of one year to commence on July 1st and go run through June 30th, 2025.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ms. Holman and a second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
And Mr. Timonier, you did say that's a savings to the city?
We're going to, we're seeing a 2% reduction in our premium for this next year, yes. Lastly, I would like an ordinance to dispose of certain obsolete equipment in the Police Department and obsolete equipment within the Water Pollution Control Department.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Ms. Foglio, Mrs. Foglio moves, Mr. Guerrero's seconds. Any discussion?
I am wondering what's to become of the equipment. I see a laser jet pro printer, copier.
Yeah, most of these
I don't know about the oven, but.
Yeah, so some of this is noted. The replacement parts aren't available, they're broken, not operational. So most of the stuff will be thrown out. If there's anything that can be either recycled or sold or repurposed, then we'll look at that. But typically, for these types of equipment, it's disposal, just garbage. So that would be for some of the samples that they take, they have to heat them to certain temperatures and things like that, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a six to zero vote. Is there anything else, Mr. Manager?
Mr. President, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a a comment and a question for the manager. Do we have an IED here in this building, the defibrillator?
We have one, not in this building, but next door.
Will we get one for this building or?
I don't, I didn't plan on it, but we could look into it.
Yeah, I think it might be an important
A good idea.
More important thing, yeah.
AED.
Agreed.
AED, AED. Okay, and I have I have a comment. I I just wanted to thank our Animal Control Officer, Adam Bergen, and also in tandem with the Ashdabula Cat Coalition for all this, for all their help this past month. We had a huge feral cat problem reported to me on Walnut Boulevard. And Adam has been helping trap these cats, place the mother and kittens at the APL and place other cats at farms and other places once they are spayed. Neighbors have caught and rehomed two area farms, 78 cats in the past year. Adam has TNR'd a total of 15 cats for rehoming and spaying since I contacted him a month ago, and it's an ongoing process. Thank you, Adam. We don't recognize our city workers enough.
Yeah, that's good.
A lot of cats.
Yes.
Yeah, well, they're all over the place.
And neighbors were were shooting at them with pellet guns.
Oh, yeah?
Some of them were injured, yeah.
Oh, well, that's not good. Yeah, we have a lot of cats in our neighborhood.
Mr. Manager, do we have any updates on the old municipal building?
Um, yeah, we do. So we did receive two bids, two people that were interested in repurposing it. We've met with one of them. I'm not sure that's going to pan out. The second one, we're still trying to schedule a meeting.
Okay. So is there like sort of a deadline or?
There are timelines within there. I don't know them off the top of my head, but there were timelines in the bid packet that we put out that we were going to hit for this.
Okay. I like the other thing I was, do we have any updates on Ferry Drive for the paving?
I wish. So this is the grant that I almost wish we didn't apply for. This was awarded, I think, in either 2020 or 2021. For some ungodly reason, they sent it through the Department of HUD. So why they would send it through Housing and Urban Development, I have no idea. We've had to do environmental reviews on a concrete road. We've had to answer questions that relate more to housing than to a concrete road. We believe that we're going to be able to advertise for a release of funds within the next couple of weeks. Then we will be able to start soliciting for bids. So I'm hoping that somewhere at the end of June, we'll be able to actually have the bid packet out. But my biggest fear now is the reconstruction of this, which was fully funded by the grant. $467,000, I think, was the total amount. That was based on a 2020 2020 engineer's estimate. We all know how prices have increased since then, so I don't know how we would come up with any further funding if it's needed for this road. So our fingers are crossed, but Congressman Joyce's office has been helpful. Unfortunately, why they took it through this department, I have no idea.
And that business back there is doing a lot of good things. It'd be nice to get that paved and.
It's why we went after the grant when we did, yeah.
Nice through there and, okay, thank you.
Weren't there supposed to be more activity happening back there business-wise or?
Uh, there potentially is, yes.
But that's not contingent upon the road?
No, no.
Being paved, okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Cooper?
I have no report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you.
Mrs. Augustine?
Yes, Mr. President. We are requesting a supplemental appropriation to cover the current expenses in the amount of $537,000. And it's broken down as such, we need to increase general fund by $30,000. And the court has requested that we transfer our fund from indigent alcohol to probation in the amount of $5,000. And the remaining $497,000 is going to go to cover, to have the funds available to cover the 2024 street paving project that we voted on during the last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Augustine.
You're welcome.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, I I
Yeah, anytime.
I I asked during pre-council to have this held out because I'm not voting on it. But the reason why is we have a $5,000, and it has nothing to do with you, Ivaros. You're wonderful. There's a $5,000 transfer out of indigent alcohol treatment fund into salaries and wages for the probation department. And just recently, we got a judgment entry where the clerk court administrator is going to be paid $5,000 for these duties. We have three three full-time probation officers, and I don't understand why one of them, who have a bachelor's degree, can't fill in. Don't understand why the court administration administrator, who's been paid $11,150 in stipends and additional funds to be the chief probation officer. The indigent alcohol treatment program is that fund is to be used for people who are indigent, who can't, don't have the money to attend the DIP program or treatment. And you can move the money if you don't spend it, but if you don't, those people don't know it's there, they aren't going to apply for it. So I I don't see taking that money, putting it into wages for the court administrator, who doesn't have the, you know, doesn't have a degree in, to be a probation officer. So that's my, that's my reason.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Counselor Foglio.
Oh, go ahead.
What do you suggest we do, Counselor?
Well, I, you know, this one person who I'm singling out went after she has her $11,150 in her stipends and her extra fees, actually makes more than our assistant city solicitor. I mean, I I don't know what we can do. It just keeps going and going, more stipends, more more filling in, more this amount of money. The last time, it was $3,000 for a 10-day period. That's $300 a day to fill in for a probation officer when we have three full-time people there. I I just, I don't get it. And I, the only thing I can do is just say, no, I'm not voting for it.
The part that got my attention is, and helped me understand correctly, that the money is coming from a pool of money. There are services available for people who
Yes, who are indigent. Because many alcohol DUIs, if it's a first-time offense, they have to go through the DIP program. I don't know, probably costs about $500 now, $600?
Close. It's a weekend-long program at a hotel.
Right, they have to go for the weekend, and they have to do that. It's it's law. Some of them can't pay that much money. So if you apply to the court, there's a form you have to fill out. It can be paid through this fund. But unless the people at the window tell them, you know, hey, there's this fund if you can't afford it, because you can clearly see they can't, they don't apply for it, then you can take that money and put it wherever you want. So if you don't tell them, you can hoard that money. Yeah, we have to fill out an indigency form, correct?
Right, there's a, I'm sure it's like the indigent attorney, there's a form that they fill out where they have to disclose their income and their assets and their household members. And if they're so many percentage above the poverty line, then they qualify. Or obviously, if they're below the poverty line, they qualify.
But do they have to pay fines? I mean, that doesn't sound very fair. I know, I know, clients dare, but I mean, some people have to pay and some people don't.
Right. No, they have to pay
For the same offense?
No, the fines are court order, are statutorily required. The court can't waive the fines. But they also have to either spend three days in jail or do this DIP program. So because the DIP program is part of the requirement as opposed to going to jail, yes, they if people can't afford it, there is the opportunity to request assistance.
And to my knowledge, if they're aware that assistance is available?
Right.
Is that one of your points, Ms. Counselor Foglio?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. There there is assistance available?
Saying contingent upon the fact they're even aware that it's available for them.
Oh, it's available, right, yeah.
But communication is the, one of the issues, being aware that it's there.
So can I ask, I don't know, if if the person has a full-time job, right? I mean, the, what's it called, court?
Court administrator slash clerk. She has two jobs.
If she has a full-time job, then how, where does this fit into that? That she would take on extra responsibilities? I'm not sure how that works. I don't know enough about it.
I thought she already was the chief probation officer personally, but I
You thought she already was?
I thought she already was the chief probation officer.
Oh, okay, so that would fit into that part of it.
And I haven't seen the 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 court order that Counselor Foglio received.
Okay.
It says clerk of court slash administrator, 215, 2024.
Okay.
So, okay.
Just to be clear, Counselor Foglio, you are, when we get to the point of consent agenda, you're going to be asking for that portion of it to be pulled out?
Just that one ordinance, yeah, just that one ordinance, yes.
The only other thing I would point out for Counselor Foglio and and Mr. President is that the salary for probation officers in the municipal court by statute is set by the legislative authority.
Okay.
Not the court.
Not, not, yeah, so that's, by this legislative authority?
Yes.
Or Columbus? Oh, this legislative authority. Oh, okay. Is there a way? Is there a way that we could vote on this ordinance and it take out this one item? Because I would hate the ordinance not to fail. I mean, I would hate to see all the other activities upheld or held up.
Mr. President, that was going to be my comment. We do need the rest of this to pass, but if you would like to, if there is a way to, I think it's called interlineate, removing
We do that?
Yeah, portion of it.
Yeah, I don't want to stop the whole thing. It's just that I I can't. I I voted the last time and I I just, I have to put my foot down again this time.
Well, and and I guess the question would be, is if you're objecting to the transfer of the money out of the indigent fund, then then yes, you would have to make a motion to amend the ordinance as it is. That amendment would have to pass, and then you'd vote on the ordinance. But I don't know what effect that's going to have on the city honoring this judgment entry from the court. And I don't know if the city has honor. from the court, and I don't know if the city has honored it yet.
I think it was paid, oh, no, it was paid on May 31st.
She said that it was an error, it was supposed to be done in May, so it's an act of the fact.
That's my understanding, yes.
We haven't, I mean, can we counteract that? I mean, it sounds like that's a done deal.
Well, and that's why I asked, apparently this bonus was already paid. So, now it's just a question of where the money's going to come from. Is it going to come from the city's budget, or is it going to come from this indigent driver education fund? I guess the point, my point would be going forward, that if there's, if there, that this legislative body has the authority to set the salary for certain court employees. Not the judge, not clerks, but probation officers, interpreters, court reporters. Those are all salaries set by this legislative body and not the judge.
Now, once again, obviously, we're not there, technically, like you are. Who normally, who normally does this job? This just came up out of nowhere?
No, there are three full-time probation officers on a regular basis. I had an issue where I needed, there's only certain things the chief probation officer can do. Only the chief probation officer can authorize an arrest warrant. So, I had to speak to the chief probation officer to authorize an arrest warrant. I was sent to Tanya, the court administrator, who is, at that time at least, ran the probation department. I don't know who the chief probation officer is. I don't know that they have one.
No, they don't.
Since she's listed as the court administrator on the, on the latest accounting thing we've gotten, then... But my understanding was she was, she is the court administrator, she is a clerk. She's still a part-time bailiff?
Oh, who knows? Probably, probably.
It just says clerk of court and administrator.
Mr. President?
Yes?
May I? Counselor Foglio, is the main issue, the additional funds paid to a city employee, in whatever language goes with that? Or is it that the monies are being taken out of a fund that offers services for folks in need?
Both.
I think the money in the indigent, that's just, and it's just my thought, it's just my opinion, that that money should be given to the people who need it and not transferred over for somebody to get a five thousand dollar stipend for doing a third job. When we have three probation officers...
Okay, understood.
Yes.
Madam Solicitor, is there a way to decouple these issues?
So, that's, that's what Mr. Timonier and I were discussing. You can move to amend the ordinance and remove that transfer from the ordinance. Then you would vote on the amendment first and then on the amended ordinance. The problem is, and I want to make sure Ben understands, this money's already been paid to.
Understood.
Okay.
I think that is clear. So, for me personally, it's not so much getting that money back. I mean, it's gone. But if there's an opportunity for us to say where it should come from, then that's a different discussion that I'm open to having.
Yes, ma'am. And that's the way to do it, is somebody to move to amend the ordinance.
What would be the other option besides this driver's thing? I mean, the money's got to come from somewhere, right? So, if we say, no, we don't want it to come from the indigent fund, where is it going to come from? Is it out of our general fund? I mean, I just, that would be the question I have to ask.
The money was supposed to come from the probation fund. And they requested that because the way that they looked at it, and based on my conversation with Tanya, it was that she looked at 210, which is the indigent fund, and said that, oh, we have a surplus. So, let's move the five thousand dollars from the indigent fund and put it on the 214, which is the probation fund.
To pay herself.
To pay the five thousand dollars.
So, what, the surplus, what is the normal amount in the indigent fund? I mean, are we over that number?
What she's talking about, the surplus, it's basically the carryover from last year. And...
I'm going to make the motion to amend...
Amend the form?
Amend the ordinance, so...
amend the ordinance?
If counsel allows me, I can go to the office and revise this.
No, you don't, no, no, don't do that. No, we'll just amend it. No, just amend it.
I'll just amend it, amend it.
Ms. Coop, you will, you will guide us through that amendment, amendment process. Just let us, I mean, Mrs. Foglio will make a movement to amend the ordinance, to delete that part. It'll be seconded, we'll vote on that, and it'll come off of there. And then we'll vote on the whole ordinance as it, as it would stand amended. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. The concern is that, that this is not the first time we've had to... All right, okay, anything else, Ms. Augustine?
No, no.
Thank you, Ms. Augustine. Ms. Bell, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. We do have some committee reports, community development and economic development?
Yes, we met on Tuesday, May 28th, here in council chambers. And we had, the city health department was here, and we had a guest speaker, Elaine Sanders. She has a PhD, and she owns a company called Maven Lane LLC. So, what she was doing, working with the health department with their accreditation, provides strategies for community engagement. Community engagement is a process of working with and through groups of people affiliated by geographic proximity, special interest, or situations. The outcomes of community engagement include trust and commitment, gaining resources and supporters, creating better communication, improving the overall well-being of the community, building lasting collaborations, and developing innovative solutions. So, they have different impact models for that. She's willing to work with us on any projects that, as far as she's working with the health department, but if, if council or committees. Every community is filled with resources and people with passions and gifts. Knowing what they are can help you better use them for positive community building. So, it was really, really enlightening, listening to the people in the community, what they want, what they need, and working together. So, that was really good. Manager's report stated the hospital now, Ashabula Regional Medical Center, is opening a new wing in June. I did go to the private tower unveiling, which was in May, and it's amazing. The emergency room, the surgery center, the Da Vinci robot, when you get a chance to go there, even when you're up there looking over the back at the river, the landscaping, it's, it's just beautiful. The landscaping, speaking of landscaping, right out here, the DG Market has started. That's looking good. Planted grass, sidewalks, updated the curbs. And we were awarded the 1.6 million dollars in Appalachian community grant funding. So, Mr. Manager is working on that. The Park and Rec Committee report is they're meeting tomorrow at Smith Field. So, they're going to do sort of a little walk and talk meeting. Our next meeting is going to be June 25th. We have Mr. Dave Thomas as our guest speaker. Also, Mrs. De Giacomo wanted me to let council know Margaret Disler's Turman Park and Rec Board has expired, and she is not going to renew it this time. This is a council appointment. So, I had the clerk send out all the applications to council. And I talked with Mrs. De Giacomo, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Leonard Jury to the Park and Rec Board at this time.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to appoint, is this the time we would do that?
Place for any questions? Is there a place for any questions?
Yeah, as soon as I announce the motion. So, there's a motion by Mrs. Mills and a second by Mr. Guerrero. Is there a discussion? Ms. woman?
Counselor Mills, what do we know about this applicant?
I, I can, I know Mr. Jury. He's a guy from the Legion that does the honor guard, and I think he has something to do with this, the Veterans Park also, as far as the say of what goes on there. So, he's kind of a good fit for parks.
Yeah, when she sent it out, it says he's on the Veterans Park Commission as a Legion Honored Guard Commander. He has responsibility over cemetery, local flag arrangements with the Veterans Task Force, the Marine Corps League, the VFW, the Legion, and numerous veterans activities. So, I think he worked on, you know, that section over there. So, yeah, came with, with good recommendation.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Jury would be appointed to the park committee by a six-to-zero vote.
Mrs. Mills, what time is that meeting tomorrow at Smith Field?
Tomorrow, it's at five o'clock.
Thank you.
Yes, and maybe, Ms. Bell, will you notify him in case he wants to go? Now, he's on the board. With our committee, too, reminder, two festivals coming up before our next council meeting. We have the Pride Festival next Saturday, the 15th, at noon at Walnut Beach. And that's the same day as Juneteenth, Celebration of Freedom downtown at Cornelius Park with speakers, raffles, music, food vendors, art, and poem contest from 11:00 to 5:00. So, there's a lot going on pretty much every weekend, I think, from now until the end of summer.
May I add to that?
Yes.
For those folks who may not know what Juneteenth is all about, is the Emancipation Proclamation was approved in 1863 that freed slaves. I mean, unfortunately, in some of the Confederate states, the slaves are not allowed to be freed. So, it was a time, not until 1865, where they made aware that they were actually free. So, that is the, the date and the reason why. They'll be celebrating Juneteenth at Cornelius Park from 11:00 to 5:00.
Thank you. Finance and Personnel Committee?
Our next meeting is June 21st at 8:30.
Okay. Public Works, I believe there's a report for that also?
Yes, we met the same day, Tuesday, May 28th, at 8:30 in the morning. And we had a guest speaker, Mr. Scott Wildega, who's a superintendent of ATAC. So, he had a really nice PowerPoint. He noted that ATAC has an increase in enrollment over the past five years. So, the month before, we had had Ashville City Schools Lisa Newsome, and noticed that school enrollment, school enrollment is down, but ATAC enrollment is up. So, in 2019, they had 486 students. Last year, they had 633. So, Mr. Wildega's been in his role for four years. They believe in skill and work ethics. They have 18 programs on campus, and due to the high demand, they actually have wait lists. So, they have 11 satellite programs at the local schools. They partner with schools across all of Ashabula County. And some programs offered are, they still do automotive collision technology, culinary arts, and they recently added information technology. They have a post-program placement of 94.8%. So, it was built in 1969, and last year, they were awarded $6 million to expand, as there's a big need. So, it's going to add 2,500 square feet of classrooms, housing, criminal justice, firefighter EMT, and advanced manufacturing. Hopefully, that they will open in the fall of 2025. Tomorrow, they have a groundbreaking ceremony at 11:00 AM. The school offers career-focused education for students to make connections between the real world and the classroom. So, the career campus welcomes students with a variety of goals and prepares them for a bright future. The manager's report says that we did hire four part-time employees. I know last week, they were getting their fingerprints and all that, so they're working this week? So, they'll be doing some mowing, hopefully. Mr. Manager? Yes. The paving projects are being monitored. ACMC or Ashabula, Ashabula Regional Medical Center is going to install curbing in sidewalks along the plaza. Water pollution provided the report. They worked on a career day, actually with ATAC, from kindergarten to sixth grade. Pipes and utility holes have been installed on West 14th Street for sanitary sewer elimination, overflow elimination project. Ohio Avenue Extension Sewer Project is ongoing. GPD study also is still ongoing. And our next meeting is going to be June 25th here at 8:30 in the morning. And that was it.
Thank you, Mrs. Mills. Any questions or comments? Okay, very good. Safety Forces Meeting will be next Monday morning at 8:45. And, you know, as Mrs. Mills alluded to, we're having all these festivals. And then we're going to have wine, beach glass, plus summer is usually a busy time for our safety forces anyway, and then they take on all that extra responsibility. So, we'll, we'll have a meeting next Monday to, to hear about that and see how that goes. There was no planning commission meeting this month. I believe there is one in June, the 20th. I think there are a couple of agenda items. The Historic Preservation Committee had, had a meeting. Nothing was approved. There was a gentleman who wanted to build a house, build some houses, and he brought his plans, and then he's going to come back at the June meeting with the siding samples, the paint colors, and so forth. But they, they gave him the idea that, you know, they're happy with this idea of adding houses to the area. They just, and he was happy to come back with the siding and the paint colors and the roof things and all that kind of stuff. There was some signage requests that were not approved because they felt they needed more information, and so that'll be coming back also. And then they did hear about the compromise proposal that, that was based on our hearing in the beginning of May. I think the hearing was at the beginning of the May, the compromise proposal. And the commission did not approve that. They did not want to take a stand on that. They felt they had their say on, on that situation, so they did not, were not interested in that. So, that was the Planning Historic Committee, and that next meeting will be June 12th, I think. June something, June Historic Meeting. Second Wednesday in June, which I think is the 12th, so, something, okay.
Mr. President, can I ask a question? So, the commission didn't agree with the owners on the property. Where, where do we, are we in a big circle with that now? Are they going to be coming back here again and...
I don't believe they will, no.
Mr. President, if I might, so without a, any kind of agreement being reached between the two parties, the way it was left by this council is that the decision of, the appeal was denied. So, the decision of the Historic Planning Society stands. And then the property owners will have the right to file an appeal, basically a complaint in the Court of Common Pleas, asking the Court of Common Pleas to review the transcript of the... of this body's hearing and make a decision. That's too bad.
Okay.
Is it permissible to add any other context or narrative about that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, the court, the court will only look at the transcript from that.
From the hearing? Okay. All right. You're going to go on to the legislative part of our agenda?
Mr. President, before we do, as we're making...
I'm sorry.
As we're doing calendaring, the next committee meeting for the Ad Hoc Committee Exploring Racism as a Public Health Crisis is June 12th at 6:00 PM in one of these rooms, right?
Okay. Yeah. All right, thank you. Okay. So we will move on to the legislative part of our agenda. If anyone in the audience would like to comment on any of these items only, now would be the time to do some, do so. We have an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Ohio Municipal League, an ordinance authorizing the city manager for the paving of Woodman Avenue. That'd be an agreement between the city and Seabrook. An ordinance to make a State of Ohio for a Developmental Services Agency grant, allocation grant. An ordinance amending the traffic control map and file. An ordinance making supplemental increases and decreases. An ordinance authorizing the city manager entering an agreement with molded fiberglass. And an ordinance to repair and replace the pump at the, with National Pump and Process. Is that all? That's all I'm showing? Okay. Anyone? I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Okay, one minute, please. Should there be more?
The SESCO imaging, do you have the sign, or the sign, the sign?
I have ordinance 260, 261, 62. What's that, 60? Okay, I was reading off the other page. Okay, yes, so there is another one, 66, for the signage. Okay. 2024-66 for the signage. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. I have a question on two of these.
Yes, sorry.
On 61, that's the sidewalk one. Would we just bid that out like all our other projects? Is that how that works?
That's correct, yes. Once we get grant agreements and everything, which probably won't come until about September, then we'll be able to bid it. So this is probably a project that won't go until next spring.
Okay, and then on 64, that's the water?
Yes.
That meter that they have, can anybody get one of those meters? I mean, I see a lot of people watering gardens. I mean, there's a lot of water that does not go into that sewer.
Right, no. So there are, we are drafting internal policies about how, who and what gets that. No, we already do a pool credit, but there will not be any for watering your gardens or anything like that, because that ultimately does go into the storm sewers. But we will have, our guys will also go out and inspect those meters once a year to make sure the readings are accurate and to make sure that they're not bypassed in providing water to other portions of the facilities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone? Seeing no one commenting on any of these items, will you read the legislation for us this evening, Ms. Bell?
Ordinance number 2024-59, an ordinance authorizing the city manager and finance director to enter into a contract with the Ohio Municipal League and Sedgwick for Workers Compensation Group Experience Rating Program for the year 2025. Ordinance number 2024-60, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the paving of portions of Woodman Avenue and Broadway Street with Seabrook Township Board of Trustees for the City of Ashvila. An ordinance number 2024-61, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to make application to the State of Ohio Department of Development for an allocation grant in the amount of $150,000, with an additional $46,000 from the Economic Development revolving loan fund for West Avenue sidewalk improvements and administration costs. Ordinance number 2024-62, an ordinance amending the traffic control map and file for the purpose of making a portion of Holbert Avenue between West 6th Street and West 8th Street one-way heading from West 6th to West 8th, and creating parking spaces along the west side of Holbert Avenue for Riverbend Hotel Parking. Ordinance number 2024-63, an ordinance to make supplemental increases and/or decreases to appropriations in the General Fund, Auto Registration Permanent Tax Fund, Indigenous Alcohol Treatment Fund, Paving Levy Fund, AMC Probation Fund, and Motor Vehicle License Fund for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Ashvila, State of Ohio, for the period January 1st through December 31st, 2024. Ordinance number 2024-64, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with molded fiberglass, granting a sewer credit in the amount not to exceed $87,285.14 for settlement of dispute over the amount of sewer deduction the city may owe. Ordinance number 2024-65, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with National Pump and Process for the purpose of providing a new pump and various components as a replacement pump for the Bridge Street and Morton Drive Pump Station. Ordinance number 2024-66, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with SESCO Imaging in the amount of $23,375.40 for the purpose of providing exterior signage for City Hall, Council Chambers, and the Health Department buildings.
It's tonight's legislation. Would we amend, will we amend 2063 at this time? 2024-63, should we amend it now? Or should we wait till we have a motion?
Well, you need a motion to amend it.
Okay. Could I entertain a motion now?
You can, yeah. If that, when it comes time to consider that ordinance...
Okay.
Then you would...
We'll amend it then.
You would entertain amendments.
So is it council's desire to handle tonight's legislation in consent agenda format?
No, Mr. President, I'd like to leave 63 out.
Okay.
Per amendment.
We have a request to remove 2024-63. Any other items? Is it council's desire to handle the rest of the legislation in consent agenda format?
I'll move on that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guerrero, second by Ms. Holman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will do the legislation by a six to zero vote consent agenda format. Ms. Bell, can I have a motion to waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Holman, second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading by a six to zero vote. Can I have a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Holman, second by Mr. Simeone. Any discussion? Ms. Bell, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. De Giacomo? Mrs. Foglio?
Okay, so...
This is just all the items except...
Except 63, yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
We waive the two readings by a six to zero vote. We will now vote on the adoption of the legislation. Ms. Bell?
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
These items, these items of legislation have passed by a six to zero vote. We will now deal with legislative item 2024-63.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make the motion to amend the ordinance and take out the transfer from probation Indigent Alcohol Treatment Fund to salaries and wages of $5,000. And everything else would be okay.
So we're going to delete the $5,000 transfer from indigent funds to probation?
Salaries.
To salaries. From indigent funds... To salaries.
It's Indigent Alcohol Treatment Fund.
Alcohol Treatment Fund, okay. Is there, you're making a motion?
So moved.
Who moved? You're seconding, Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Ms. Foglio moves to amend the legislation to delete that item, and Ms. Holman has seconded that idea. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm looking on here, so does it look like, so that's Fund 210? Is that...
210 to 214. Yes.
So they have $30,000 in there now? Is that what I'm looking at on here?
$30,000, where?
In 210?
They have $30,000 left for this year.
Do they, do we, do we know how much they normally use every year? No? Okay, I didn't, okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I guess I just, my question is, where is this money going to come from? We already paid it.
We can decide that later, though. We're just, aren't we just going on?
Are you leading it from the legislation? Mr. Guerrero, you're asking me?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'll see who the finance director, I just... I don't know. I just, I'm, does anybody know where this money would come from if it doesn't come from the indigent fund?
Special Projects Fund, probably.
It could come from Special Projects Fund.
There will be a judgment entry by 7:58 tomorrow morning.
The judge could cut back on her spending in other discretionary areas.
Okay.
There are lots of things that, I mean, if I overspend my budget in one area, I either need to stop spending or I need to move money from my operating account to my professional services account. She has several accounts that she could move money around in. I don't know what the balance of any of them are. But just like the rest of us, there's only so much money you're allowed to spend. And so if you're going to spend it in A, you can't spend it at B.
In special project, that is, they have $48,000.
What was that?
In court special project, they have around $48,000 left.
So she's got access to the funds, then? All right, well, that's, yeah, that's no problem.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to amend the item 2024-63. We've had our discussion. Would you please call the roll to amend this motion?
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. De Giacomo? Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
The motion will be amended by a six to zero vote. So we will now go back to, and vote on everything else in 2024-63. All the increases and decreases to all the other funds. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of that legislation in its entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Holman, second by Mrs. Mills. All in favor of waiving? Okay. Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the entire legislation by a six to zero vote. Do I have a motion to waive the charter requirements for two readings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mr. Simeone. Ms. Bell, will you call the roll on waiving the charter requirements of two readings?
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. De Giacomo? Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
We will waive the charter requirements by a six to zero vote. We will now vote on passing of this item of legislation?
Mrs. De Giacomo? Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
The item has passed, 2024-63 has passed by a six to zero vote in its amended form. I believe that's all our legislation for tonight. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Does anyone have anything for tell us something we don't know?
I actually do. Mr. President, last Saturday, I attended amateur boxing card on West Avenue at the, but Mr. Tim Moore, Moreno Productions, was a USA Boxing, it's kind of like Golden Gloves, but it's just a different sanctioning body. And I just, I wanted to point out that it was an excellent athletic event. And they had former champion Kelly Pavlok there. And there was some local talent boxing. And I guess I just didn't realize how the participation level of boxing in the city. I was, and I, I just, that was a really nice event that the city hosted. And I'm hoping that they're going to do it again in the fall. But I think we should give a shout out to the organizers of that event. It was very, very well done. It was right at that Andres Party Center. And there was probably, it was probably about 15, three-round bouts. And it was, it was, it was very well done. I was very happy to see that that happened.
All right, very good. Anything else for tell us something we don't know? I will just add that, you know, things are still happening. We have a new meat market on Lake Avenue is opening back up. That opened today. So we want to make you aware of that. And if you're so inclined to support that meat market. Also, I will say, I was in Chalk Box. It's called Chalk Box. And they've done a lot of remodeling there. And boy, is it very, very nice in there. So, you know, new businesses and other business owners keeping up with things. So a lot of good things going on. Anybody else? This is the time of the meeting. We will hear from the public?
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, you know I always have at least one thing.
I know.
But I think I might have two. But just a reminder, Safety Town's back again this year. So the police and fire Safety Town, you can register online, but you have to do it by the end of this month. And I think if you go to the City of Ashvila, our Facebook page, I think there's, you can find the dropdown. There's four sessions in July. So this would be for incoming kindergarten students. So that's always, that's always a good time. And just a reminder, this is really interesting. This Friday, and this is free at Lakeside High School, there's an author, Doug Talami, author of the bestselling book Nature's Best Hope. So he promotes, he works with these pollinator clubs. But he lays out all you need to know to participate in a great conservation process and just in your backyard. So what we can do with saving the environment. That's at 7:00 at Lakeside, and that is free. So, and he's wrote about four books. So you can kind of, you can kind of Google it and go online and see a little bit about it. And so if you have nothing to do on a Friday evening, that's going on, yeah. And I don't know if this is the time. I know it's to tell you something you don't know, but I don't know this. Mr. Manager, I noticed, is there a sign missing or something with the Shelby Way as you're going to the hospital?
I don't believe so.
I don't see the sign there, so maybe...
I just saw it today. I will take a look, but I'm...
Okay.
You mean, you made two, yeah, there's one sign.
The one that, when you're going to the hospital, there's all the sticks up, but no sign. So just take a peek.
I'll take a look on the way.
Take a peek.
Take a peek.
At the hospital, the sign naming the street, but that's not what you're referring to.
No, when they had that...
Yeah, we had, gosh, I want to say...
Was it a red with white, was it?
No, they were blue and yellow, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like the sticks there, but, well, just check it out.
I'll take a look.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Mills. Anybody else have anything for tell us something we don't know? I would just say, you know, the last couple of meetings, we've had a lot of visitors, and I would just like to compliment, most of our visitors were very well behaved and very respectful of the rules, and we really appreciate that. They followed the timelines. They didn't, you know, they didn't get out of, and so we really appreciate that. And I think that's a wonderful reflection on Ashville, but also our council, which I thought handled everything very well. And so I just wanted to mention that, that our citizens, I appreciate that, and their demeanor and their actions. And hopefully, it's going to be a nice weather and a nice event that will transpire in spite of all the, I don't know what word to use, confusion.
Disagreement?
Yes, which is, no, good. Anyone in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Young man in the back? Anybody else? Seeing nothing, at this time, council is going to adjourn into executive session, at which time we will come back out, and there will be no action taken by council.
Mr. President, who do you want in that executive session, other than Mr.? Who do you want in that?
Well, I imagine the manager and its elite...